Hey everyone.
Hey guys.
Ben here again for GTO Lab and yeah, same setup as yesterday. We're going to be going through some, some of the main event hands from 1D and yeah, going through, you know, some general poker theory and most, but mostly like specific exploits for the main and just our opinion on some of the hands. Yeah, and I think we have the requested hand from yesterday as well that people wanted to see, which should be fun.
Yeah. Hey guys, Thomas here. I always like reviewing main event hands because I feel like there's such a variety of profiles that it gets us to think outside of the box very often and practice really the understanding of the game at the deeper level. So I'm very excited to be here with Ben. I'm going to share my screen and we're going to go over the hands. And I believe we're going to start with a hand that yeah, got a lot of people talking. Alright, if you're ready, Ben. Shall we? Shall we get into it? Alright, go ahead. So we have open here from Soderstrom who's kind of early position and third again eight. We have button, three betting queens. So far seems pretty standard. By the way, I'm just mentioning that I think we could flat queens here sometimes, like that's a, that's an option.
Yeah, I agree. You don't have to feel like these are mandatory plays. Yeah, I think goes either way, I would probably base it on, you know, how wide you think the opener is. Like kind of some of the spots we looked at yesterday, some people were really kind of taking the soft main event thing way too far and opening really wide even from early positions and versus those people who think just like three betting is going to go very well, but if you had someone you think is on the tighter side, but a very loose player in the big blind, like maybe just leaning towards flat is completely fine.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yeah, I like that. I like always to look who's opening and who's in the big line. Sometimes you can also think where your EV comes from, like if the best player of the table opens and then you have the worst table left the table in big blind, it probably incentivizes you to flatter a bit more to invite, you know, the worst player at the table. But then of course, you know, it's a back and forth balance where if everybody noticed that, maybe everybody opens wider on that big blind and then suddenly you also have to three bet more. So it's like poker, I guess it's so interesting. Three bets, so 150 deep, I think it could be slightly bigger. I could probably be up to 4X, but that's kind of a detail. Three bet from queens and then small blind has aces. That's a good hand. We're going to play this hand.
Yeah, I think that's a a thing that sometimes people aren't as sensitive towards of, you know, when you're, I think this would probably be a fine size if the button was next to act and the same stack depths to the kings and when you're three betting a kind of more linear range and a lot more of your range is just going in the three bet because people behind you and you don't want to get squeezed as much, but when you're on the button and you're just going to be very polar because you just have such a good option for your middling hands to flat and not reopen the action. You end up choosing a bigger size a lot. So I think the three bet could be nine, 10 big blinds here. But then I think the aces size is good and kind of reasonable for this for the stack depth going from eight big blinds to 28 seems fine to me.
Yeah. Yeah. I wouldn't go bigger than that though, but for sure, they're super decent.
Yeah, I think it just seems like probably the right size.
Yeah. Interesting call call from Kings here. I doubt that is a thing. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you want to play cold calls here. I think it's usually just a spot where once there's a three better, you've opened a tight range, then there's a three better and then a big size four bet, your range to continue is so tight that you end up just kind of just being all in with that entire range.
With it. Yeah, for sure.
Like I think like, you know, if you have something like jacks, it's just an easy fold. You're kind of renewing with, you might even just fold some ace king off there, right? It's like it's a tight spot in a great tournament. You might like, okay, I'm going to continue aces, kings and ace king suited. Like I think, you know, it doesn't feel that comfortable with kings because someone has put in 14K and there's the button. Maybe you can make some arguments with like, yeah, I know you're meant to shove everything, but in the main event, I'm going to like cold call ace king suited and kings. And then if the button shoves, I know they have aces and like make some crazy hero fold, but I think they're just like.
Yeah, I feel like there's other ways to, like, I'm wondering, could we click 24 here? We are playing 60. I mean, wouldn't be the most absurd thing ever, I think, to bluff ace king off, for example, click 24 and plan to fold. And then you can do that with aces. It's a very unique situation. So, you know, it's a super exciting hand, but at the same time, it's not going to happen so, so often. So, yeah, yeah, the only thing is I agree that the call with kings is kind of feels weird and there's no hand in our range that we want to call almost ever.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would just be all in and pretty, and just like, it's not amazing, but yeah, sometimes you just have to be out if they have aces. As well because the opener is only 120 bigs, right?
Just over 125. It's not like you're going to get away with kings on any board. Like if your opponent has aces, there's only two aces left in the deck. So an ace is likely not coming. So you probably have an over pair. So, yeah.
Even the c-bet is still strong, right?
Yeah. I mean,
what do you think about the queen school first? Like, once you're in this situation with queens for the extra 10K, it's like.
So called for, the call is very interesting. Yeah, the queens is already a very horrible spot to be in. Because again, what do you do on that board? Like it's
I guess, I mean, there's some chance that you're, it's pretty close, right? Because you can hit your queen, but then things get so condensed that like you might not even always get paid. If it's ace or king, queen high, you're like just getting colored quite often. But there's some chance that this player just thinks, or they are just up against like ace king off from the small blind and ace king suited from the cold caller or something and they just think that they're going to show down and just like fold to c-bets and try and hit the queen. So it seems pretty close to the queens, but I think it can't be like, it's never going to be terrible to put in the extra 10K. It's just very close, right?
I also think that there's probably an argument of player playing fairly honestly with those big hands. Like I feel like most ace king players here are not going to just bet, bet, bet and bluff the stack off. Like it's going to happen, but maybe not enough. Right? Ace king is kind of the only bluff that small blind could have here. And so they should probably just bet, bet, bet the entire range somehow. But if it doesn't happen, if you feel like you can realize a little bit more equity with queens because you can fold with higher certainty and maybe check down sometimes. Yeah.
Yeah, especially when they both have it sometimes, right? Like because they're both going to be worried. It's not like your heads up and actually going to get, they might just both freeze up and you just show it down and you're like crushing them when they do. So I think the call seems fine. And then, yeah, like you said, the, the c-bet is just immediately very strong, right? When you're the king say, I would not.
I wouldn't be excited to c-bet my ace king, you know, of diamonds here if I, if I would be small blind.
Yeah, and it's probably not good against someone who's like cold called a.
Yeah. Alright, so small c-bet.
I mean, what do you think of the aces c-bet?
Versus the cold call and I mean, I guess versus those ranges, when we have two aces, that's a very appealing hand to trap with just because they almost always have over pairs and so probably someone's going to stab. But I also feel that the c-bet line is easily bluffed in a way that, yeah, you could c-bet ace king with the ace of spade or whatever. But once you check and if you do something fancy like check raising or, or even check calling, you suddenly don't have so many bluffs anymore. Or perceived at least.
Yeah, I think specifically in the main as well, like if you're playing against three very tough players that know each other, maybe you can like check and do something and, you know, you want to think more, oh, I can still have bluffs as the four better, but this person who's cold called always has something incredibly strong. So I need to do some checking, but I think here you're kind of just thinking, okay, this player has a very good hand. Yeah. I block them having like just red ace king off. They probably just have kings or queens, one of them, and people aren't just going to fold kings or queens to one bet on stream. And you can just kind of exploit and just not worry about, oh, I need to have some checks, but when I have ace king, like just stack them.
Yeah, I agree. Play, play honestly. And again, that's, that's what's going to happen next time in 21 years probably. So, you know, it doesn't matter if you, when you check you fall 100%, like really, really doesn't matter. Alright, so c-bet a quarter. I mean, yeah, I, I just don't see how kings can get away here. So they're probably going to call. I'm going to fast forward a little bit. It's just hating his life probably. Yeah, queens now could find a fold, right? Like it's so hard.
I think it might even be, I'm not sure. I thought it might be like less close than it looks in terms of like so strong as not just, people, people just get tight in every spot in the main. There's a chance there's the small blind is doing what we're saying where like you don't really need to bluff that much and just like always bet aces and be unbalanced that way. Then once it's gone cold call, like once it's gone cold call, the four been cool, Soderstrom probably just doesn't have ace king anymore. If he does, it's like ace king of spades. So I think you're just kind of dead a lot. And this might be, like, it might just be a really clear fold, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
EV wise in the moment, I think it's like.
Yeah. Good, good fall in, in like less than a minute, like so.
Yeah, it's a good fold to do in game. It's like way harder in game than us just like saying it on the stream after.
Yeah, for sure. What do you think of turn now? Do we keep the line of they have kings or queens and we try to stack them?
This seems really close now because I think that like some people do actually start finding hero fours with kings and queens when you just jam. Like it's so much harder for you to, it's perceived like you said, that someone might just be like, oh, I have ace king or maybe with the ace of spades, I'm just going to c-bet a quarter. That's the standard thing. It's like you said, it's kind of easy to do it if you're just one of the, if you have a player that's just like, oh, I'm the pre-plot aggressor. I need to see that. But once you shove the turn, like you piece it together, like they kind of aces. So I don't mind the check here where it looks a bit like, and then you shove river on a deuce and they it's like, I think a bit harder for them to hero fold then.
Yeah, I agree. But I also think we don't necessarily need to shove in a way that there are no studer hands or straight draws or in probably in anybody's range here. Like at least the cold caller exit, like you said, ace king suited of spades specifically, probably only at this point, like even if, you know, we wouldn't have the aces of hearts. So I, I think we could just also play, you know, bet a quarter now and then, I don't know, a sixth of the pot river. But yeah, both, both checking and betting very small. I agree shoving is the worst option here. No need to be afraid of monsters that like under the bed that don't exist. There's no flush draw, there's no straight draw. It's only over paired. They have two outs. Alright, so check. I think it's a good play. I like it. Now I think here theory versus practice is pretty interesting because in theory, you would probably want to bet only, like you could bet small and you should probably never bet four kings here. But I think in practice, you could really get away with betting 20% pot here and folding if you face aggression and checking back.
Yeah, I mean, even like especially with king of spades, king of hearts, where they can't have ace, king of spades or hearts, you could, you could maybe bet like 10% pot. And fold because people are, I just like, do you think someone's just going to wreck you of like ace, king of diamonds? Like
No, yeah, ever.
It's not happening like that. It's not happening on the turn. They're not c-betting like you would, you know, maybe it happens every now and then, and like we would do a stream about it kind of thing, but there's a, there's a reason that those hands are so in demand when they happen because they just don't happen. So I think that is like an interesting possibility. You can also, you can also check and fold, right? Because you don't need much protection. If you don't think they have ace, king of diamonds much in the first place, then like the 10% doesn't really get you anything because you don't protect. And you think you're, you're like worried about aces, like checking back and folding against some players is also got to be a consideration. Like think how tight you are here, you know, like if you're not checking back and folding kings sometimes, what are you checking back and folding? Like you don't have queens. It just folds pre, right?
Yeah, maybe queens is in there, I guess, sometimes, but yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty tough, pretty tough hand. I think I, yeah, I mean, I, I would never be shoving the turn though. I don't think this achieves anything.
I think it doesn't accomplish anything. Like we said, especially with those suit, you, you really, you are against ace, king of diamond, maybe that went crazy on the flop. Or aces, like, so, you know, you don't accomplish anything. I like to be 10% and, and just fold versus a raise.
Yeah, I think the only time that I would want to shove this ever is if I was with a player that I thought was getting really out of line and like one of those players trying to run over tables on day one. And I thought there was a chance that they actually just had like ace, five of diamonds or something.
Yeah, but that's
They were, they were forbidding so much that I thought they had that like.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, okay. But there's a chance that if they have that hand, they also shove the turn themselves or bet half of your stack or something.
Yeah, and it's kind of like an extreme example anyway, because I think you have to think they're doing it a lot.
Yeah. Crazy, that, that's a real crazy main event hand. I'm glad I didn't have kings there, but I think.
Yeah, it's a tough handle the way through because all, all it takes is for you to think in game like, oh, I think he would cold fold back queens and not check aces on the turn and suddenly like kings shoving turn seems like a great play in your head and like it all happens very quickly. So it's quite hard, you know, it's easy to sit here and.
For sure. Yeah, I agree. We don't know the history, nothing at the table. Yeah, yeah, definitely. Alright, cool. Let me get the second hand. Alright, so this looks like a multi-way. Let me go back a little bit, alright.
Is this maybe the hand before or something?
What? Sorry?
I thought maybe it was the hand before or something, but they like switched tables quite a lot.
Yeah. That's a big pot. I think there was a three bet, right? We just saw, okay, so probably there was open. Who's first to act here? That guy. Okay, so open and third again, seven seems. Six, seven off. That is a very optimistic open. I wouldn't do that. I don't think it wins money. Three bet. Okay, open to 800. Three bet to 2.5K from Kharov. That seems good. Call, call fives on the button, playing super deep with everybody and maybe some information on the opener that might call everything. So I think that's fine as well. In the main event, playing versus weaker profiles. You are in position and everything. Small blind calls. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's still close. I, I think there's still like we would want to be deeper with the opener to do this, I think, still.
I mean, we are 150 deep with the opener.
Oh, sorry. I meant with the three better.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the problem. Yeah. I think, I think the EV really just comes from that character. If somehow there's information that he's never folding to a three bet and he has six, seven off in his range. Yeah, following a set versus that guy, if he makes a top pair is worth a lot of money, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. The threes, I guess, starts being I mean, you're getting better odds, but like you're, you're now even like the cold core range of the button is a lot of pairs, but
Yeah, yeah. I think that threes should just fold out of position. Like you said, if you play a 300 big blank pot, you might just be behind. So, yeah. Threes calls and then yeah, six, seven of calls, of course. Okay. A check from small blind, I suppose, or I check from opener and caller. I wouldn't c-bet that hand. I would play rather honestly, in a way that I would bet over pairs, maybe ace nine, maybe nine, eight type of hands, hands that need protection. We don't need to bet big multi-way. And a few bluffs I would have would be very equity oriented, like hearts and potentially some open ender if we do have some, but I'm not sure we should at that stack depth. Maybe jack ten of spades, but even that hand probably just calls pre. So yeah, mostly, mostly flush draws, like natural draws.
Yeah, I think that sounds, I think that sounds good.
Yeah, multi-way. I mean, this is again a super unique scenario, but overall in the more common scenarios, multiways, like let's say hijack open, but on button calls, big blind calls, you, you play more honestly. So you bet your equities, you bet your backdoor nuts, just because they can block the nut or they can make the nuts. And then you bet your vulnerable hands. But if you have air, you check multi-way. That's kind of the truth.
Yeah, yeah. You just need so much expertise to like bet into three ranges.
Yes.
Honest poker is fine. And then, yeah, I think similar thing like from what we just said is I wouldn't bet the five sim for a similar thing of like, I think you have a good enough kind of hand to be bluffing. You don't have a strong enough hand to be protection betting. You have one player in the hand, like if, if the reason you called the button is that, is what we said about the opener, you have one player that's probably not going to respect multi-way and just like fold second pair on the flop where some of your fives bet could be that you just get poking eights to fold, but this player seems like the title might not just do that on the flop and.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Your five is dirty. Like if you hit the five of heart, you know where, yeah. Alright, threes is fake tanking. Good job, bro.
Blasphemous. I'd be thinking about whether it's the time to open a pack of cards.
Maybe, maybe check raise, rep, rep a set. That would be funny.
He's just getting, he's just getting the TV time for his.
Oh, wow. He looks like he pulled, I mean, he had chips in his hand. So let's see, I'm, I'm going to go forward. I don't know if we see the hand of the of the hand history. Let me go forward. Okay, so it looks like we don't have the hand, but he had chips in his, in his hand. I'm very curious now. I guess go for a little bit. No, doesn't look like we have the end of the hand.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a shame.
Yeah, the check raise, I think, because it looks like he's pulling it off. I think it's the hero syndrome at this point. It's like even if it wins money, it's like a gigantic variance and I mean, once anybody sees that, you have such a label on you that all your future moves are like rude. Like you cannot bluff anymore for, for the next 10 days kind of thing. So, yeah, for me, that's unnecessary.
Yeah, I'm still unconvinced whether he did it, but I guess, I guess we won't know.
Yeah. Alright, let me switch to the next one. Okay, next one. So we have raise from Eric from Canada. Here, low jack. Oryx. Call from Winkles next to act. I mean, it's fine, I think, but it's just fine because probably of the profiles and if you want to play very deep in position versus Eric. But it's, it's in terms of GTO like that, that's probably very close versus 4X.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, the 4X is unnecessary and you should just be opening if you, especially if you want to open wide, just be opening a kind of standard two and a half X. And then the five four, like you said, I think is just like in theory meant to fold versus 4X. But if you think you have an edge on someone and the people behind are like, it's also, you know, you get this thing of how people behind are going to react, which is so important for the table dynamics of how often this person has been at 4X opening or how often they've shown down because sometimes you get these things where maybe if you put it in a solver versus 4X, it's always, you're always meant to fold, but every position behind is going to bluff in the solver. And sometimes you just get these players who 4X when they have a strong hand, everyone at the table knows that. You get to like call and play a position and then nobody behind three bets anything because everyone's just like, well, I'm not going to three bet until, unless I have like, you know, queens plus because this guy has something good. And then, and then you get to make some of these calls, especially if you think you're just going to play better than, than post-flop. So I think like, I would still pass on the five four here. I think you're just slightly too early and I think in the main event, it's like you're going to be playing in position to this player for the rest of the day. If you think you have an edge, you're going to get money. Other ways, this pot's going to be pretty big because they've just forced it to be.
Yeah, I agree with all your points.
Take these tiny edges.
I mean, I, I agree with all your points. However, I am team flat wide whenever you think you can play heads up in position deep. I've actually ran sometimes some sim where, for example, I made a very loose defend in the FT of the Triton 150 in Monaco, where I, I called Jack five off in the big blind versus Gambeldor. And afterwards I ran some pre-flip sims where I would just force my opponent to do something that limits his, his options. So for example, I would only allow him to play B33 every street, one third pot. So he doesn't have bigger size. It doesn't have over bet. Now he's going to play perfectly with that size. He's going to raise enough and everything because it's the solver still tries to, you know, compensate and balances. But, but just doing that and you widen your range by like two, three, four combos, just because you're going to realize more equity. So I would say this is winning if you are sure that you have a significant edge post-flop. That's one thing. And then two thing, what you said is if everybody respects the 4X and you play heads up 90% of the time.
What do you think in the main about how like, because we say in theory, we think this is losing, then you can get it to like small winning because it's this and then like, do you have a threshold in the main for how much you want to be winning to into the pot or you just push every edge for 4X?
I'm going to have thresholds for sure.
The solver is going to like tell you, you can go wider, but those bottom pips that it adds will be making nothing, right? So like, do you want them?
Yeah, yeah. Very good point. I do want, I think, an edge. Basically in every single decision, I think every node. However, I think it's actually fairly rare that we are in a, in a really marginal situation, like in the real life. I think in real life, it's usually either winning or losing a decent amount. I think what we call super marginal, it's usually just because we aren't sure of the answer. You know, but we never play versus robots. We are not robots. So like, so I think in, in, in practice, it's one or zero. My guess is just, this is a one, but it's pure guessing and I cannot prove it to anybody. Yeah. I wanted to comment on the 4X and I think it's an interesting strat, especially earlier to size up. But that's when you want to play tighter because everybody flats everything behind you. And so you're not going to open king 10 off anyway, or even king jack off and third again eight, if everybody flats everything. So it could make sense to size up and just play a tight range. And then if they do flat, Jack seven suited from hijack, then they are making the mistake basically. And you're overall, like over the long term, you're making a lot of money. Alright, so raise call. That is, yeah, just a fold. Terrible hand to play, even versus 2.5X. That would be very close already. So versus 4X. Terrible hand to play, even versus two point five X, that would be very close already. So versus Forex, um. Old. Um. Kind of auto C-bet type of thing, I guess. Um. Yeah, I just feel like people see that too much here. Yeah, this is not necessarily a terrible hand to see bet with, but you know, that should be a low frequency. It's like a bluff that doesn't have much equity, doesn't even fold out. Hands that beats you, like I don't think he's gonna follow ace green, okay, queen suited at least. Um, I'd rather have more equity, like King five, that can make a straight, uh, and also fold out King ten, that beats me.
Yeah, or just something worse, just something like nine, eight of diamonds, right? Just sort of like a bit better playability, but bit worse hands. So you fold out some, just like Queen ten more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. And you should be careful in these spots, you know, once you get flattered in position, but I think it's more interesting because like. A lot of people. Will, a lot of people watching will know that you're not meant to see bet these spots as much. Some people won't, but maybe won't do it. Uh, I think it's more interesting to talk about the perspective of Wilks, right? When you're playing against someone that. You can often get a lot in game about the timing where if someone's just making all their decisions really quickly. Uh. It gives you some information when people just kind of. Snap see bet these spots or it's like when someone lives the small blind and just snap puts one big blind in, you're like, okay, they're probably doing this way too much if they didn't even think about. Like, cause most hands, I mean, I think about it, right? There's not.
Yes.
There's no hands.
Exactly.
Probably like no, no hands in this situation that are pure C-bets. You immediately know they're C-betting too much and that's like massive information for you going into the future streets.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, this is a hard spot to pick your bluffs in theory. So, yeah, I agree, just snap C-bet. Um, what do you think of the call versus the raise?
Uh. Think Ruth's seem. Yeah, I don't have like huge preference. I think raises, I think raise is kind of nice. Um, I think it depends what you think of the size up because he did just go like B seventy-five. Um. Uh, raising the five four of clubs specifically is quite nice. Like I think if I have something like five four of hearts, I'm just happy. Playing the hand, there's, you know, it gives you like an extra twenty percent of the deck that's ready to play. Five four of clubs specifically where you have like a value hand, kind of in the sense that he might just be doing this with ace queen sometimes. Uh, he's gonna have way too many of these bluffs that you want clearance against and. You know, you can just like check it down sometimes. Sometimes you. Hit the four and get to play a really great pot where it doesn't look like you have a four. Uh, so I, I think just like a small raise to seventy-two hundred or something would be pretty fine and. I don't really have a strong opinion on which one makes more.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I asked because I do. I'm very appealed by the raise for the reasons you mentioned. We don't have backdoor, so we kind of have the best hand very often, but there's no good turn card for us. Um. No matter what he falls versus the raise, we are happy with, we're happy basically. And then finally, I think something that is a little bit more technical that people don't think about is that what's the. Theoretical, what's the GTA response versus the raise here? And it is to actually three bet fairly aggressively. Right? Because opener has an overpair advantage. They have aces, they have kings, they have queens that the flatter doesn't have that, that often. And they're supposed to leverage that by three betting. And so let's say the raise is seventy-two hundred, they're supposed to three bet to. You know, eighteen thousand with Kings plus very often, make sure we stack off tens, jacks, type, type of thing. And add bluffs to components, like to balance that, right? So King Jack suited, I don't know exactly what the bluff be, ace do suited maybe. Um, we're supposed to have a bunch, maybe ace king of clubs type of thing. Uh, we're supposed to have a bunch of bluffs. But again, do people do that? Not really. So that means that if you raise, you probably realize your equity, um, slightly more. So both are winning money.
I think that's definitely something you have to think about, right? Uh, I, I was actually saying like, I, I would think that actually this is one of the players that I would be worried about, like.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, for sure.
So like maybe not the best customer?
Yeah, I agree.
If you just think it's like, yeah, you're not repping anything and I'm just gonna three bet, so like I.
I agree.
Why would like the call against him?
Yeah, I agree.
And then.
That's, uh.
You know, I think, I think this whole hand is gonna be more interesting for the, more interesting for us to talk about, at least from the imposition perspective, right? Because the, the imposition plays are all like things we would have done at some frequency and the out-of-position players kind of got, got out of hand in terms of.
Yeah.
I think we would, we wouldn't have Forex, we wouldn't have seen that. And I think this C-bet on the turn is just starting to put way too much money in the pot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have Queen, you have Queen Jack, you've gone Forex pre and then massive bet, massive bet flop, like you need to, you need to chill out, I think.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to have bluffs here, all right, and you probably should. Try to have equity, like try to have King five or, you know, I don't know, something, um, or.
And like eight, six, two, two, ace five.
Yeah.
Ace deuce.
Yes. Try not to block also the float because now the problem with having diamond hearts is that you block King, Queen of Diamond. Um, you know, King, Jack of Hearts, hands that would have float the, the flop. Um, so on the turn club. You know, you probably just wanna really give up and, and chill, like you said. Uh, so he'd be hundred, so he put the turn, we call in position, reverse a nace. It's very interesting river card because I feel like. Um. Aggressors in the game usually use the ace as a, as a good card for their range. But there are scenarios, and I think this is one of them, where the ace is actually not a great card for. The aggressor, because your value hands are mostly overpairs. Um, aces is the hand that's gonna trap some, like at some frequency every street, so you have a little bit of less of aces. And then you don't really have ace, jack, ace, ten, ace, queen, like, you know, potentially you have ace, deuce, ace five, but. Those hands don't really wanna build a giant pot on the river anyway. Um.
Yeah.
You might have.
Yeah.
That was bluffing, that could be a thing, but that's about it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that, you know, you often don't even see people use that, right? Like people like to be, like what you were kind of saying, like. Most of these sports are more polar. Sometimes you, when you see solver outputs, it can be like. Kind of the solver getting tricky with ace king, I think specifically sometimes for this reason of just having different hands or different runouts. People are usually wearing more kind of simplified human strategies of like, I have Queen Jack, I'm gonna bluff, I have ace king, I'm gonna try and get to showdown and then like. Like you said, yeah, you get aces reduced by the other streets, aces reduced by the fact there's an ace. And yeah, most of the time you're kind of just saying you have jacks and I think that maybe like you're. You can have some like really big sizes here for when you have pocket sevens or pocket fours or ace three and then some like. B twenty-five for when you just have jacks and they're gonna try and get one more crying call from eights.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Um, and then if you think about the number of a six in, in positions range, now there are much more in my opinion, because if they did flat ace, king, ace, queen. Um, you, you just, you could just call flop for sure and then turn, why not? But then you have way more stronger a six on by the river. Um. So, yeah, I, I feel like it's not a great card, but at the same time, I understand that people want to leverage it and think that, you know, eights, nines, tens are gonna have a really tough. Decision.
Yeah.
But if you think about it in depth. Uh, snap fold too. Yeah, that, that's like, I think just the problem here is.
Uh, yeah, I mean, this is like.
Not personally the hand.
Yeah, I think these spots, like especially when you're in tournaments like the main event. Unless, you know, if you have a. Not, say this term is the seven of spades and you had eight, six of spades on the river, like sure, snap fold that, but it's like. Apart from a situation like that where you're just facing a huge bet with, and with like eight high or something. Anytime, like people are playing such kind of swingy strategies that you can have. Plays that are really, really bad and really, really good and they can like swing pretty quickly depending on who you're playing against. And I don't think you should be making that many like snap river decisions because also, you know, when. We've just gone through. Like I'm just watching this hand now, uh, and. It just takes us a couple of minutes to be like, oh, like, is this card good? Would this person have bluffed the turn with these hands? Like.
Yeah.
Actually, which, which sizes should they be using? Does this size, they make any sense? Like folding before you even kind of find out what size they use is. Uh, you know, and I would go back to like, if you're doing that. Like the, the pre-call is not.
Um, no.
You know, you're making this, you're making this pre-call because you're like, I'm gonna outplay this person and out reason them and like. Be able to decipher their strategy in a way that allows me to make some plays that are really profitable. And I think this is probably a spot where you might be able to just. Really get this guy like, do you think he's just gonna flop pocket fours or ace three and just start like bombing huge sizes? Uh.
Yeah.
Do you think?
My head's zero aligned.
Oh, you think he's gonna overbet river with them maybe instead of like the ninety percent pot where it's like. You know, he's not really, he's not saying he has queens anymore for twenty-seven K.
Yeah.
Maybe ace three would get greedy or pocket sevens would get greedier and just go like forty K or thirty-five. I think. Think this is a spot, you don't interfere with any bluffs, like the five, four, you block fours, you block five, six, like this might be a. Kind of printing call versus this player type.
For sure.
Um, you gotta like think about it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I completely agree. And I, I go back to, you know, my, my. My thought of, this is almost always a one or a zero and. If it's a one, it's not close. If it's a call, it's not close. Like Ben said, it's like printing infinite money. And then if it's a fold for some reason, maybe on different runouts versus different profiles, then it's just burning money. There's nothing that is very close. But so when you like take such a fast decision with a hand that. Could be making infinite money, yeah, it's a big risk of. You know, having the, how do you call it in English? The thing that horses have on the side.
Tunnel vision.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
The, the smaller thing as well, I would say is that, say you get to a spot like this and you're, you're very confident on your player read, you trust your instincts and you think. I agree with you guys that. It's zero, one, and I think this is a zero, I think it's losing a lot and you're like very confident, you're right. You still shouldn't snap fold because this is on stream and they now know the spots that you think are snap folds.
True.
You should like.
Yeah.
You know, you make it way easier for them for the rest of the day to just be like, oh, this person perceives these spots versus me in this way where they think I'm never bluffing these spots. And you just get, you can just get destroyed, like you, you can think something is a. And you know, the opposite way, if you're playing someone on stream or you're playing in games like online, where you're playing the same people a lot. You might have a spot where you think this is the easiest hero call versus this guy ever, because he's just aware of the bluffs these spots. You still wanna like take a minute, not tell him.
I agree.
Think that, just like, you know, just, just sit there and just like look unhappy for a bit and then cool, like that's your, that's where your money comes from in poker is like. Having good exploits against people. Don't tell them what they are.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, it's, it's, it make me think of almost every day at the World Series, I meet somebody at the table who really. Tells to other people his read on them, like, hey, you have been tribating me ten times or hey. Uh, it's the first time you three-bet did today or like. I mean, unless they have some kind of very sick mind game that I don't comprehend that maybe they, they gain an edge from, which is possible, but I think most of the. Time is maybe a problem of ego and you want to prove that you are observant and blah, 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 but you are really burning your jokers, you're burning your secret weapons. Like if you know the guy has to be bet ten times, don't tell him and just four bet your entire range the next time or like do something about it. Yeah. All right.
I mean, I think usually when people tell you those things, it's because they want you to do the opposite, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
They're trying to stop you without actually doing any poker back, like.
Yeah, yeah.
If someone says those things to you, usually it's a sign, like keep on doing it.
Yes, hundred percent. You three-bet me ten times today. Yeah, okay, thank you for, uh, the information that I can't keep doing it.
Yeah.
All right.
So another, another Afriat hand.
Well, nice. Um, cut off open, Eric calls, small blank calls nine, seven suited, that seems all fine. Um, probably no lead on that texture. People see that too much anyway, so I would probably just never lead. A good example of.
Too much, too much multi-way as well. Like we saw like the five sand earlier, if you're playing people with. Strategies that are just gonna start stabbing these like middling hands on multi-way boards too much. You don't need to like put a bunch of time and energy into making complex, leading strats. You can just like. You know, if they see that too much, just check and proceed from there and let them make that mistake.
Hundred percent true, yeah. Like a C-bet, let's see the size. Uh, this is not a texture where we wanna size up too much. Okay, so one-third. With that hand, it's probably fine with a wide range.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that the, I think the, the spot is meant to check a lot when you're.
Yeah.
When you're so close, where maybe if, even if you're just like under the gun, seven versus button, you get to bet more, but. Cut off first button, you're just meant to be checking this board a lot. But, yeah, it's hard to say because this is a hand that seems like pretty reasonable to see that and. You know, it's kind of fine, especially if you think you have two kind of players that are gonna give you action, it's fine to just like bet your value.
Yeah, also again, I think heads up, I would probably just check my entire range there and then multi-way. You start to be slightly more honest where I would always bet, for example, uh, black queens. Uh, I would always bet maybe, you know, ace, jack, uh, and then you can slow down, you can just check turn super strong, super protected. But multi-way, that's just the nature of the game where you wanna bet slightly more honest and I would never bet, you know, uh, I don't know, King ten of spade, for example.
Yeah.
Um. All right, what do you think of this decision here? I think it's fairly interesting already. So seven deep with opener.
You were just cool. Uh, I think, I think that you, it looks tempting to raise and sometimes it's kind of nice to raise these really high equity hands. And I think that maybe if we were deeper as well, some of it gets more attractive or even if we have something like seven, five of diamonds. But here, I think you're not like quite deep enough where. Like you said, I think people are gonna be very focused around ace, jack, queens plus and you're not really at a stack depth. Maybe if you both had a hundred K, you could be like, oh, I have a lot of equity and I'm actually just gonna like, when it turns an eight or a five, I'm just gonna be all in by the river and they're gonna fold everything. Cause I think they have queens a lot and they're not gonna risk their main event life on it. When they have twenty-six K, like. You're not getting to fold those hands and they have those hands. So it's never gonna be really bad because you can see that you have forty-six percent equity. So it's kind of just almost like a value raise, but it's, it's more like, uh, because you're. Yeah, it's kind of like a gambly raise or just like making the pot bigger when you're probably not pushing too much of an equity edge, but. Uh, but yeah, I mean, they're gonna have some like Queen ten of diamonds that you are. Ahead of and this just can't be raised, but I think I would take it more passive in these spots.
Yeah, um, I agree. I think I could see a raise being more useful on, on another type of texture, for example, uh, King four, five. So those more, like when there's a really low card and high cards, where there's, I feel like there's a bigger. Range, uh, there's a, there's a wider spread of hands that beat you that are gonna fold, right? So on King four, five. Uh, you check raise, let's say they call jacks once and turn is like a six, um, you bet they fold. So you, 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 you end up. Falling out hands that beat you more often, where here, there's not so many of these hands. It's probably not C-betting tens, maybe not nines, so like, yeah. Okay, uh, he goes for the call with one chip that was, oh no, raised.
I think. I think he announced five K.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, goes with the check raise. Think.
And I think this is.
Yeah. It's just a call.
Yeah. I think, I mean, if you're shorter, if you have like twenty K here and not the ace of diamonds, you can just definitely consider just putting that in and just like not having bad cards. But I think with the ace diamonds, uh, being slightly deeper, you just have like, just call.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Shallower, whenever you have backdoor equity, backdoor blockers, that's like a good time to quote unquote, slow play. Uh, even if it doesn't seem like a slow play, but, uh, and then like Ben said, if you have black queens here, uh, and you have twenty K, you just shove. Because it's not really like you're gonna be able to fold many runouts. Um, maybe ten, fifteen percent of the runout, but you just let your opponent realize all the equity however they want. Uh, if you just every time call that black queens here.
Yeah.
Just make sure you don't fast play. Uh, too thin, like if you have King Jack here, it's just always a call. Uh.
I mean, I think even it, I, I completely agree with that and King Jack, I would always call. I think the black queens, even at this stack depth, might just go in, especially versus main event. Like a lot of people in the main where. Depending on how much action you think they're giving, again, it's like that thing of, you know, it can be really good or really bad. But a lot of people do this where they're not really sure, they have had like nine, seven of diamonds, they hit the flop pretty hard, but doesn't necessarily need to raise, but they just like. Put money, put more money in the pot and if they're just kind of doing it with all of their, you know, it's meant to be value hands at a high frequency and then all the bluffs at some frequency. But if it starts becoming value hands at a high frequency and then like the last hand where it's like Queen Jack blasting off and like here where it's like. Okay, they're gonna have non-pair diamonds, but if they're also doing it with all the pair diamonds. okay, they're gonna have non-pair diamonds, but if they're also doing it with all the pair diamonds, like even when you're pretty deep, maybe you can just kind of put in queens anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then they, they kind of, they, they probably end up making falls with a lot of equity. Like, maybe he calls this hand, but maybe he folds, you know, nine, four of diamonds and you just one hundred percent of a big pot.
Yeah.
And he had to forfeit his equity. I said nine, four, I don't think it was nine, four from the small blind, but maybe like king, king, four.
Yeah, or just like nine, eight of spades, right?
Yeah. Um, now he'd be two-third, uh, on the king of diamond. I mean, that seems like a big bet, because it's half of the stack of the, the other guy.
Yeah, I think, I think this is unnecessarily big. I think usually you want to on these flush computers bet small, because your like, bluffs come from different parts of your range on the flop. And your value is kind of set in two pairs that are still pretty good hands, but not the nuts anymore. Your flushes are mostly not gonna have a problem getting money on the river and you want to keep your range together and like still be able to bet something like sevens or pocket sixes or maybe even seven, six. So I think you just want to bet like twenty-five, thirty percent pot here.
Yeah.
And I think that also makes it a bit tougher for them, right? Because.
Exactly, yeah.
When they do have the black queens or ace, jack, no diamond, it's pretty tough. Whereas like, I think if they just have ace, jack of spades here, that you just let them get away, whereas putting in.
They just fold, yeah.
Putting in like four K and then putting into the river decision goes pretty well.
Yeah.
So yeah, I, I, I would bet smaller, but I don't think when you have, when you actually have a flush, like, I think those are kind of theory things. I don't think the E B is hugely different for a flush.
Yeah. And that's gonna be interesting, I suppose, small blind's gonna shove. What do you think of, uh, ace, jack with the ace of diamond decision?
I think that this is, I mean, it's obviously a pretty annoying spot when you get these spots where you're putting, the pot odds are great. I think that this is a gross spot. If they were the big blind, I would be considering calling and probably call a lot, because they just have like ten, nine, nine, eight with a single diamond, hands like that. Maybe just like queen, ten with a diamond, they got aggressive with. I think when they're the small blind, it's like so hard. I, I think that people these days, especially with how poker is like spoken about and studied by a lot of people, people love blockers and people love bluffing when they have blockers and like not bluffing if they have bad blockers. Whereas like solvers do a lot of kind of pretty savage plays that aren't fun as a human. I think in these spots, people like to have a diamond to bluff with. And it's just so hard to have a single diamond hand when you're small, when you're flooding the small blind, right? Like, they have to check raise you on the flop with something like pocket fives with a diamond and then just decided to go for it. And I just don't get this happening.
Is, here bluffs is kind of fantasy land. Also, bluffs might pick another sizing on the turn, I don't know, eight, like eight, nine of spades. So yeah, I think it's just a, just a follow.
The one that comes to my mind would actually be ace, queen with the ace of diamonds. That can take this line, that like calls pre and then, and then check raises flop and goes the size and turn committing itself, but like you have the ace of diamonds.
Yes.
So I, I think this is a, a good fold. But yeah, I think if they're the big blind, it's much harder decision, right? Where they can just have nine, eight with the diamond and you're getting such good odds. Um, but I, I, I think it's like, a nice fault to make in terms of, sometimes it's very easy in these spots to be a bit kind of, oh, I had sixty K. And now I have thirteen, if I call and win, I have sixty again, if I have thirteen, I'm kind of out, like, I'm like, oh, I don't want to be on thirteen. Such good odds, I'm just gonna call. And I think that sometimes that can, um, take precedent and people kind of go with those feelings more. And I think it's.
Really good comments.
It's nice to see people in the main, like, that's such an important part of these long ten-day tournaments, right? Is you don't control the, the hands and the boards you get, but you do control the decision-making. And part of going into this tournament is accepting like, hey, for the next ten days, I'm just gonna try and make really good decisions, whether they like suck emotionally or not.
Yeah.
And that's a big part of this, that makes a big part of poker as a career and as a game, but like this specific tournament probably the most. And I, I like to see these folds from people, not just the kind of like, ah, it's like four to one and I haven't got many chips left. And like, I have a good hand, I'm just gonna put it in. So it is nice to see the discipline.
Completely agree. And it's funny, but it really resonates with me yesterday. My day two was exactly like that, where I think the six biggest, uh, decisions I made were either a fold or check back on the river and, and lost, uh, like the six hands. And I had sixty K, you know, after eight hours into day two, um, which was half of what I bagged. And I was so happy with that, because I made such tough folds and check backs. And I pretty much, like, some of them I was confirmed were right, some of them I just followed my intuition and I'm just happy with that overall. And, uh, yeah, uh, like really, really resonates what you said. Good decisions is the only thing that matters.
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna do one more, uh, let me run a quick ad before.
GTO Lab, coaching for the next generation of MTT champions. Join our live webinars covering GTO, ICM, PKOs, exploits, deep stack concepts and more. Train with the greatest minds in live and online poker. Join GTO Lab today and get weekly coaching and full access to our number one ICM trainer.
Okay, um, so we have time for one more. So, uh, raised three X from cut off. Still super deep poker. Uh, flat is for suited in the small blind, flat big blind. I think there's already interesting material here. Um, my first thought is that the bigger is the open, the less you want to flat. And that's counterintuitive for people, uh, they think, oh, it's, you know, if I three bet, it's gonna be such a gigantic pot and, yeah, but you have the worst odds to call when it's three X, when it's four X, when it's five X. Um, so you usually want to switch to three better fold type of strategy, like three X is probably not exactly there. But if you face four X, five X, you kind of switch to three and a fold.
Yeah, I, I think that that's true depending on the player. I think that sometimes like, again, like you said, you know, if you, if you had it in a solver, it's gonna be.
Yeah, okay.
As you get to three X or four X as well, they're getting really tight. But if someone's just doing the kind of four X raise, but with a normal open and then playing badly post, you can still just like do what you want.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a bunch of profitable flats, uh.
Completely true, true.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the ace four suited, the, these look like both, you know, the ace four and the seven, six, I think can both just go either way at both points and, uh, is going to be a case, you know.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Said enough times over the last few days now, it's like, main event is gonna depend on the players and stuff, uh.
Yeah, I think the six, seven suit has such sexy squeeze there. Super deep, you know, plays well, like, but then again, that's because you fold out ace ten off type of thing. Where if your opponent doesn't fold anything, uh, then, then maybe you want to keep the SPR higher, the pot smaller, um, for when you make a straight or flush. Um, alright, so it's, okay, um, this was great pre-flop. We took something out of it, but there's one hand that actually people really wanted to, to see. Um, and so I'm gonna switch to that hand, making sure we have time to.
Yeah, if we only, yeah, if we only have time for one.
Yeah. Um, uh, this is this one, three forty-seven, alright. So raise two point four X, uh, that's it, great hand. Uh, okay.
Yeah, this was one everyone was requesting yesterday that I didn't, I hadn't, you know, I'm not in Vegas, I haven't seen and hadn't seen this hand. Uh, but people kept telling me yesterday that they, they wanted the Blesnik hand, so it'd be good to finally see it.
Yeah, I don't know what, what this is about either, so. Uh, early position open, two point two, pocket nines, three bet, that was the six, seven O. Um, guy from earlier, small three bet, it's not a thing at that stack depth. Um, aces in the big blind. Okay, click two X. I think it's a good idea not to flat and play super deep three-way out of position with your, with your aces. Um, so I think it's a good idea to four bet.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the size is interesting of whether you want to, because obviously like, you know, we know from this player, I assume they've been playing a lot at this point. They, they probably know he's pretty wide, the three better. So your getting range also gets wider, because you're not just gonna fold something like nines to someone that you know is like opening seven, six off and three betting seven, six suited in his position. So you probably want to get in like nines, definitely tens, like ace, queen, probably you just got to get it in. So, but he's gonna flat a lot when you do this tiny size, right? So I, I would want to go more like, more of a kind of forcing him to put it in or not pre.
Yeah.
And not play and just go like eight K and also not allow the person behind to cold call as much.
Just flat, yeah.
I'm interested to see if like, it's gonna be interesting down the line, because I would imagine, when I like playing versus Blesnik and someone that I know is thinking about poker, but not like adhering to the rules of, oh, I need to do the same thing with my entire range. I would actually expect this to, like, I would be a bit worried that this is a bit more polar of like aces or some hands that aren't sure. Like, maybe nines make sense, where it's like, oh, I don't want to put in so much money, because it's the bottom of the getting range. And then aces make sense, because it's like, I don't want this guy to ever fold. So I would be like, paying a lot of attention to that going forward in the hand as well as the, because it's pretty, when you have ace, king off or jacks to just go like seven K here and be.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, for sure. Those small bits of information, I feel like our intuition is really good to, uh, compute them. And sometimes we rationalize, we're like, and then we forget about that small bit and then we're like, oh, we play versus this range. But I feel this is where, in, in my personal opinion, this is where super elite players can make a difference versus very strong knowledgeable players, is that they use the intuition, not in a way, hey, I feel, I feel you're weak, I call. But in a way of my brain, my, my intuition can compute, you know, hundred times more information than, than my rational mind right now. And so you kind of have an inner knowing, uh, the more you study the game, the more you, you know, understand equilibriums and everything. And I think you're right, like, now we play versus a more polar range and we have to take it into account for the rest of the hand. Um, the four bet seems unnecessary to me, in my opinion, but I don't know what you think. Like, I think it seems like nine is just, uh, five bets, sorry, five.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah, I'm sure, because they, yeah.
Yeah.
The.
Two hundred fifty deep. Yeah.
Literally specifically as well, like, because I think, from what I said of just how I view the spot, that I think nines is the kind of close bottom hand to get in as the big blind versus the more aggressive three better, like I also just wouldn't want nines. I think it like, even if you just said to me, hey, I'm gonna do this with sixes or something, I would be like, probably happier.
Yes. Yeah, 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 I agree.
Uh, yeah, in general, when things, like, starting from the fact that I think this is a very, eh, like, not very, but all of these things add up, right? Where you're playing a lot of multi-street hands when you're very deep and you just want to kind of take a little bit of information from every decision that they've made, if they're giving you sizing tells or anything, and I would already be thinking, okay, I think there's a chance that they're more polar, the hand I'm really worried about is aces. So I'm gonna take out some of the more linear five bets that I might have in a regular spot to try and get them to fold something like, you know, jacks or whatever later. And I just think that actually, I want to interfere with them having aces, which obviously like, yeah, it's not kind of crazy. It's not like I'm saying anything genius, because like they're four betting, you're five betting, you want to block aces. But I think once they've gone to small size, it's probably even more true. Um, and I think that this ha, this hand class, like, if you think this person, Kunix with the seven, six is doing this, which they probably, you probably know. So they're not gonna shove that much and reopen the action, just because they've got a bad hand so often. And then this, and then Blesnik's gone this tiny size, I think you can actually take advantage of it. And if you want to V pip here, just cold call the nines.
Yeah.
Like, try and stack aces. And Kunix, you know, like usually you wouldn't want to cold call this spot, because the under the gun seven players may have a strong range, you're gonna shove jacks and then Blesnik seven bets or whatever it will be, or six bets, I guess, and you have to fold. But now it's like, you know, you know, this guy's just got seven, six suited a bunch or king, jack off, he's probably just gonna call. And you get to play multi-way and try and, you put four K in, in a spot where Blesnik's got aces kind of often, it's like amazing for you.
I agree.
So I, I think that like, V pipping the nines, like if they, if this nine said cold called here, I would be just saying like, I think this is fine, I think this is like a reasonable exploit versus the two players and the sizes they've chosen. But I think the five is like, kind of the opposite, and I think is, is maybe the least fun exploit.
That would be also, I think, my default. And then where, like, if you're worried that, like you said, they reopen the action and you end up, you know, playing a weird pot or profiting your equity, that's kind of like, that doesn't cost you more than five bet folding or, or just five bet calling and losing. Like, if you call five K, they shove for like twelve K and then big blind, I don't know, calls. Maybe you can call, you play in position in a, in a very honest poker game where nobody bluffs, because there's no side pots. Um, that's at least in practice, I'm not saying this is the theory. Uh, if they shove and then big blind clicks, you just fold and you lost five K. So you don't really lose more, you don't, you know, I don't feel anything bad, uh, happens when you just cold call.
No, I think that's just a good, I think it's just a good play versus the, versus the two players in the moment, with the ranges that we think. Um, I think it's probably just the right play, uh, once you get in.
We face almost the same range, aces, kings, uh, ace, five suited maybe, but not really. Like, do you really want to call four ace, five suited when the three better was, you know?
I was gonna say, I, I, yeah, I don't think you can do that, right? Because that guy's never folding, so you just have to have this like very, very linear thing. So I think the bluff would be something like, maybe like ace, queen off, that was like, that thought it was the bottom.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think, I think once you're here in the main and versus someone like, like specifically versus Blesnik as well, I think that you're just up against aces like ninety percent of the time here and you're not getting the pot odds to.
Yeah.
Set mine and you just have to fold.
Yeah. I have no idea what happens, but I am a little bit excited.
I guess you're right. I mean, you're really close to getting the pot odds to set mine, but.
Twenty-two, yeah, it's, yeah, it's probably just a fold, um, cause it's not guaranteed that you lose zero when you don't flop a set, so I, I give it comes eight, eight deuce, we're probably just not folding to one bet. Oh, that's a nice window. Oh my.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a pretty good scenario, uh. I mean, I, I'm gonna get, I like, pre.
In my mind, aces has, in my mind, ace, if I have aces here, I'm like, I have the best hand a hundred percent of the time. Like, there's no hand that.
Yeah, I, I, I would be thinking the same, this is an unfortunate spot for Bles. Uh, I think.
Big bet.
Pre-flop I found super interesting, think it's, you know, this is now, well, actually this flop's, I was gonna say it's gonna get less interesting as we go, because it's just like, you know, what, like you said, like eight, they both just think that they're stacking the other person right now, a hundred percent, so I.
Yeah.
Uh, the interesting thing is Bles is bet, right? But it's, uh, yeah, I mean, what do you think about it first?
I, I, like, I understand, he probably feels he's always versus nutted range, but there's a few potentially ace king in there, I don't know, like, I, I, I think this is slightly too big, like it's, you don't need to go ten percent. I agree, you face a strong range, you want to stack them, but this is slightly too strong. And in my experience, this is just not a bluff.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I would agree that it's just not a bluff very often. I don't, why, I don't think he's bluffing pre very often anyway. Um, I think it really depends though on like, the player type you're up against, if you think someone's kind of prone to level themselves and they, or they do just have like jacks plus every time. There are some arguments for just getting the bet in on the flop, which is the street they never fold. So that they like have a way to have a, like, because if you go really small, they're gonna be facing B fifty on the river maybe, or bigger sizes, maybe they can hero fold. But if you just kind of just like, eh, you're not folding flops, I'm gonna make the pot bigger and then go B twenty-five, B twenty-five, where you're kind of forced by pot odds to feel like you have to call off. There are some player types where I don't mind, it's just like big size up and just be like, hey, buddy.
True, yeah.
I, I think you have queens and I'm just gonna like make you put thirty K on the flop. And then we're gonna be, and then we're gonna be playing such a big pot that you're not gonna be able to fold. Um, so I, I don't mind it, but some people have just that like deviation of, just like, yeah, I just think you have a good hand and I'm just gonna kind of go off script and just put a lot of money in.
I think turn is the biggest mistake though, like, I could find a fold with kings on the turn, I don't know. Uh, maybe people are gonna try to bluff me now that I said that, but I'm, I'm never calling queens ever versus the shove on the turn. Um.
It's, yeah, I mean, I, I think this is actually like kind of really similar to the first hand we saw with the aces king queens, where like everything gets so tight, where when it, when it goes the tiny four bet, I would probably just cold-call queens initially anyway, and just like play a multi-way pot in position to the deep person, and keep, keep the player in that's playing all the hands, so like
Yes.
on the tur, on the turn here, like, and I would fold ace-king on the flop probably to the huge bet, so like completely unreasonable to just roll kings on the turn when it's probably like all you have, it's probably the worst thing you have at that point.
Bottom range.
So.
It's bottom and top range with aces.
Uh, so, but yeah, I mean, I, I agree, but like, what do you think? So, th, there's actually, I think I didn't say at the time, I think we ended up moving on, but, uh, similar to, you said that the same like the first time, right, with the aces, that they could go quarter pot, which was like half of the other person's stack, the aces versus kings, and here, you know, you're playing Lewis PR, but like, do you ever think versus some people that you're just worried that it just looks so much like aces already, that like when you start going this like tiny size, tiny size, that they're gonna read into that, like?
I mean, I feel like if they call thirty K on the flop and you put twenty K on the turn, I don't think they're folding. And then.
No, but, but, but if they fold the river.
Yeah, but, I mean, for me, this is so big that
Sure, yeah.
I'm much more afraid that they get, they just fold very confidently on the turn.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah. Back.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think it depends on this.
People had a bluff in this spot, but I haven't seen a bluff in that spot for a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty hard to bluff this spot, and and actually, I thi, I think in the main event, like you shouldn't really be bluffing this spot a lot, because a lot of people lack the ability to like really go uh, really like adjust with relative hand strength, and might just like call, call off queens here. So, you probably don't want me bluffing, maybe, yeah. Maybe, maybe you can bluff us, I guess, apparently.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, probably, yes.
Like, take, take your ace-five, uh, but against a lot of people in the main. But yeah, this is like tough spot for Bles.
Yeah, that's a tough spot, yeah.
Um, yeah, like a very happy spot in nines.
Yeah. Um, that was it for the hands we picked today, so I hope you guys enjoyed, there was a lot of comments, um. So, uh, so yeah, uh, somebody, the last comment is, best regs would fold kings on the turn. So, yeah.
Um, yeah.
It's like we are not the only ones to, to think about it.
Yeah, sorry guys, I actually, I actually have my chat, like, was not showing me today for some reason, so, uh, sorry if anyone's comments got got missed, but we will be thinking back for, for more streams as the main goes deeper, so, uh, hopefully see you all in some of those.
Yeah, and good luck everybody, whatever you're playing.
Uh, yeah.
Especially in the main, of course. Alright, thanks for watching, guys. Take care, everybody.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.